Reduce the requirement. Call to order, Town of Fairfield zoning board of appeals. Now I'm all flustered. Notice of public hearing, April 6, 2023. When I call a matter, I want the applicant or his or her agent to come up to the podium and present your case at that time. During your presentation, if that's the time for you to give us anything you want us to see, if you have pictures, if you have petitions that are not already in the file, you can present those, even if you're not sure and you have a copy and you want to make sure. Present it only while you're making your application because we need, and you'll find out why, we need to have a very clean and clear record. So you're going to have the floor, and while you have the floor, once you start speaking, give your name and address, you can present stuff for us to consider at that time. After the applicant's presentation, I will then invite anyone who's interested in that application to come forward and speak. There might be some people speaking that are appearing remotely as well. I give enough time to make sure that they let me know whether you're here or remote to speak. I first allow people that want to speak in favor of an application to come forward. If there's someone that's going to speak in favor, I let them go. Then I ask if anyone opposes that application, and then you can come forward and speak. If there is any opposition, I will allow the applicant or his or her agent to then comment on those opposing comments. Okay? Rip, butt, address, or just answer some of the questions. Sometimes there's a question that is opposing yours. That's the time for you to address the opposing comments. It's not a time for you to restate your application. This meeting is being taped, and that's required by state law. That's why I have a particular process that I like to follow. And I want you to, you know, when you're speaking, you're speaking. We might have questions after you speak, but only one person can speak at a time. And then if you come forward, give your name and address up at the podium. We invite anyone who's interested in the application to come forward and speak, but please remember, and sometimes there's confusion, and I think that confusion may have been expressed by a comment earlier on, that there are two different zoning boards in this town. This is the zoning board of appeals. So it's people coming here looking for some type of forgiveness or variance relative to the regulations about what can be built and where it can be built and how big it can be built, which are set by the planning and zoning. Everyone, a lot of people confuse the two boards. We're here about the already existing rules and regulations and someone looking to vary those. That is our focus. So please keep that in mind when you're making any comments, whether you're in favor or opposed to that application, because I will reserve my right as a chairman to reshoot your comments at any time. After everyone has all the public hearings completed, we're going to close that public hearing, probably take a short break, and then we'll reconvene our working session, at which time we'll be voting on every matter that goes forward today. There are, you see, there's five of us up here that vote. You need a super majority for your variance to be granted. That means you need four of us to vote in favor. If it's just a straight three to two majority, your application will be denied. Or I encourage anyone who's interested, obviously, if you're the applicant, you're definitely interested, but if there's other people that are interested in a particular matter, to remain in attendance. We don't close it. We allow you to hear what we're talking about. We allow you to hear our discussions. Sometimes there's a lot of discussion, sometimes there's very little, but if there's a lot of discussion, I think if you're interested in that particular application, you'll be interested in the discussion and the comments by the various board members that are voting on your application. Just finding out whether it's granted or denied, you know, depending on which side you're on, is beneficial. But if you're on one side and you want it to be granted and it's denied, you've lost the opportunity to find out what we talked about and to find out why. And if you're on the other side, when it was granted, you've lost the opportunity to find out why we decided that way for something that you were opposed. But if you can't stay, there's no penalty. I don't keep track of the people that are leaving, okay? It's fine because you can call the zoning office tomorrow to find out what happened on your particular matter. If an application for waiver is granted, make sure you get some money to the town so it's official. It's not official until it's recorded on the land record, so you must make out a check to the Town of Fairfield, the amount of $60, and send it over to the zoning department Wednesday or later of next week. That will allow for proper recording of the notice. Any waiver involving construction, whether it's a new dwelling, whether it's an addition or alteration, will require an ASB build before a certificate of zoning compliance or a certificate of occupancy can be issued. And now I'm going to call the hearing. Our first matter that appears on our agenda.
Could you please announce the continued items again?
Yeah, that's about it.
Oh.
As we get to the regular hearing, just a reminder from earlier, we have three items that have been continued. The first is our already continued docket, and that's number five on that docket. It's on up number five, continued docket of our agenda. It's 2268 Fairfield Beach Road. That is continued until May. And then number nine and number 10 on our regular docket, which are 1001 and 1003 South Pine Creek Road, have also been continued to our May hearing. No business on those today. They'll be brought up in May, assuming that they go forward at that time. And now I have to call, even though I just mentioned that, I have to call it again so our record is clear. Continued docket, number five, 2268 Fairfield Beach Road. That has been continued. First item for business that we're going to have today is our general docket, and that's number one. 1565 Post Road, map 180, parcel 82, petition of United Fairfield Realty Group LLC for variance of zoning regulations, section 28.6.12, to reduce required parking spaces by three. Permission to establish restaurant premises, CDD zone. And we have something remote on that. Who's?
Someone's right there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Keith Prolock. I'm an architect licensed in the state of Connecticut. My address is 176 Down a while ago, New Haven, Connecticut, 0651. I'm here today representing a conglomerate of owners who would like to open a cafe on 1565 Post Road. It's in the, for those of you who are familiar with the building, it's a building that contains street spaces. Bon Chon is there currently. In between was a clothing shop that closed down a while ago called the Penfield Collective. And on the end is cleaners. Penfield, the middle space is the space that we are interested in opening the cafe. It is a Tees World Japanese Crepe Cafe that will be serving only sweet crepes. For those of you who are familiar with Tees World, sometimes they offer sweet and savory. Here, this will only be sweet. So think of it as kind of a, and I, this is a store in a way. It's not necessarily the kind of place you'd go for lunch or more of a snack. As you can see, this is one of the older buildings along the old Post Road. There is a side parking lot that serves all three tenants. However, there's limited number of spaces. There's 11 total. And as such, we are seeking relief for three spaces because we cannot possibly, this is a site and it's an interior project. So that's why I'm here today. And I'm happy to share floor plans or just an overall. But because it is a one-floor, one-story space, this is the Post Road side, single entrance, we have very limited seating cabins here. The map is sufficient occupants by occupants' code. It's milk, grab and go. And the rest is dedicated to preparing grapes and protein. So we don't anticipate a high amount of vehicular traffic. I think most of the people that will be coming here will probably have had lunch somewhere else to make dessert or maybe late afternoon, cup of coffee, snack, about 14 of these applicants here. And that is why we're here today to seek relief. And just to round out the discussion, this is, the only exposed elevation is the one that faces Post Road, and this is what it will look like. Is that, I think I can include my.
All right. Can I see that picture?
Sure.
The, no, the picture you had before.
It's the same one that's on your.
Close down here? The colored one?
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to be.
Yeah.
I'm happy to submit.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Board have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jane.
Quick question.
Yep.
Because you're going from a retail to food service, do you have to go to letting in a building or something?
Yes, that's in essence what we're doing. As part of the building application, and I believe that everything is in order with the exception of the parking.
Any other questions? Did you make?
I did, yes.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application 1565 Post Road? Hearing none. I'm going to close the hearing on 1565 Post Road. Thank you very much, Mr. Crowley. Next item we have is number two. And that is 668 Bronson Road, map 229, parcel 194, petition of Ready to Go Enterprise for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line setback from 30 feet, currently 26.2 feet, proposing 26.2 feet. Permission to construct a one-story and second-floor addition premises A zone. Is O'Connell here or McKeon?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Usually people are jumping up and running over to the podium, so.
You're ahead of me. Alan McKeon is my name. I represent the owner of 668 Bronson Road. What we are proposing is modification of the zoning requirements based on the fact that the house was built, or most of the house was built in 1914 prior to zoning. And consequently, the front of the house is too close to Bronson Road. We're proposing to eliminate the existing front entrance, which is recessed into the house, to move it out flush with the front wall of the existing.
Drive and map 13.
The only modification, first floor modification on the second floor actually involves the roof, of changing the roof pitch from a, somewheres between a three and four pitch to an eight pitch. And those are the two additions to the premise. I think that's it.
Yep, and I saw that there are petitions signed off in the file as well.
Yes.
All right. Does the board have any questions for Mr. McKeon? Drive and map 13. Hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application 668 Bronson Road? All right. Hearing none. Thank you very much, Mr. McKeon. Closing the hearing. Our next item on the agenda is 208 Shoreham Village Drive, map 130, parcel 207, petition of Donna Shay for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce sideline and street line setback from seven feet and 30 feet, currently 4.1 feet and 29.2 feet, proposing 4.1 feet and 29.2 feet. Permission to construct an addition to attach a detached garage and second-floor addition premises A zone. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm the owner, Donna Shay.
All right, why don't you share? I want to complete the exterior. Be the design group.
My architect is not here, so you can all tell me if you think I should fire them right now, because they were supposed to represent me. But anyway, no, they're a great design group. But I know the project quite well. I'm quite involved with it, so I'm going to kind of wing it here because I've never been to one of these meetings, and I hope you guys can guide me through it. So I'm not adding a heck of a lot to our house, but we are doing curb cuts on the street side.
I want to complete the exterior.
Curb cut now for my driveway, which they're proposed a kind of turnaround in the front of the house, so there would be an exit point at the curb also. And I have a site plan here that I can actually make available to you, but I think they've been here for preliminary meetings and delivered packages all through this process. So that's what we want to do in the front of the house, which I think was one of the items at issue, if I can, well, of course, that's.
I want to complete the exterior.
House. I want to look at the site plan here. I'm a little embarrassed because, again, I'm not the person that was going to make this presentation. It's a good thing I'm comfortable with it. I actually don't have the site plan, but I do know they actually turned these all into a, oh, here we go.
I want to complete the exterior.
We're in trouble, man.
No, no.
Anyway, here is how the house is situated. This is the front of the house, okay? This is Shoreham Village Drive right here. As you can see, the house here, and what we're proposing is a, in addition to this curb cut, another curb cut here with parking that comes into the front of the house.
I want to complete the exterior.
And then the second area of focus, I think, was the garage, which is now positioned outside of compliance with your rules because it was built in 1938. And so the only way, I think, for me to actually comply with setbacks is to move it forward and attach it to the house. So we're moving it forward eight to 10 feet to attach it to the house. Okay? That's what you're looking at.
I want to complete the exterior.
I can show you that in the design drawings. I can show you that. Very familiar with that aspect of it. So you can see here, the, see the setback here? And here's the slab ungraded as it exists now. It's actually moving, the garage is moving forward to this location here and then being attached to the house with kind of an overhead walkway. Okay?
I want to complete the exterior.
Those were the only two items, but is there a third item that was on the? I'm so sorry again for.
No, those are the, those are the items, the sidelines and the street side setback.
And I think they've been to engineering, right, and zoning already? And our landscape designer.
I want to complete the exterior.
And I do have five signatures from the three adjacent properties as well as the two patty corner ones.
And you also have an email that was sent in from the Oleski, 137 Shoreham Village Drive. In favor of it as well. 137 Shoreham Village.
Oh, they sent an email?
Yes, they did.
Oh.
Okay.
I'm sure I could get more signatures. It's a, it's a very tight-knit neighborhood, and I'm a third person on the house, start to make changes. I mean, the third person on the street to start to make changes. I've been in the house 20 years, and I plan to be there for 20 to 30 more plus. I don't know how I'll do with that, but, so, that's why we're making the changes to the house.
All right. Does the board have any? I want to complete the exterior. Any questions? All right, hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that opposes the application at 208 Shoreham Village Drive? All right, hearing none. I'm going to close the hearing on 208 Shoreham Village Drive. Thank you very much, Ms. Shay.
Thank you so much.
Our next item that we have is number four. That's 497 Westport Turnpike, map 258, parcel 48, petition to Charles Rocket for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce both sideline setbacks from 30 feet, currently 16.5 feet and 22.9 feet, proposing 16.5 feet and 20.8 feet. Permission to construct an addition and deck premises triple. I want to complete the exterior. Are you, Mr. Rocket?
I am.
All right, just, I have a question for you because there was a neighbor that asked us to postpone the hearing, and I think you're aware of that. And my understanding is that you would still like to go forward because you have spoken to that neighbor. It is not usually my thing to force someone to continue. We entertain continuances and allow continuances, but I don't, I don't force someone. I want to complete the exterior. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, and if you want to continue, that's your, and I would, I would deal fine with it. I'm not going to force someone to go forward, but do you wish to go forward today?
I do.
All right. Fair enough. It's your prerogative.
All right. I got another letter of approval from my neighbor.
Great.
Seeing just some pictures you need to see. This is something.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Rocket. This is my wife, Zena Thasi. We're teachers in the area. We purchased 497 Westport Turnpike on January 5, 2021. At the time, it was an uninhabitable foreclosure that had been neglected for decades, and I've been working on weekends and during my breaks to improve the property. I'm here today because I want to complete the exterior renovation.
Mr. Rocket, one second, I'm sorry. I didn't put the whole thing on the, the whole call on the record, did I? No, I don't think I did. I don't think so. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Rocket. Sorry to interrupt that, but you're seeking, this is 497 Westport Turnpike. I wanted to take care of the initial thing. I apologize for interrupting you. Map 258, parcel 48, petition to Charles Rocket for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce both sideline setbacks from 30 feet.
Yes.
First regarding 5 feet and 22.9 feet, proposing 16.5 feet and 20.8 feet. Permission to construct an addition and deck premises triple A zone. Now you can begin. I'm sorry about that. You handed in some pictures and an additional letter in support. You're a teacher, and you've been working weekends and breaks to work on your home.
Yeah. So I'm here to complete the exterior renovation and to expand our living room. So I have two hardships. First, regarding sideline setbacks. So I have a non-conforming lot that's long, narrow, and steep, and a tiny three-bedroom, two-bath home built in 1920. It's currently 1,033 square feet. The parcel is steep enough that my second floor is where my front door and living room are. And then like my kitchen is in the basement. So when I say second floor, I'm really talking about like the living parcel is 1,000, they're at the front door, just to clarify. So on the southern setback, I'm not actually shortening the distance between my home and the sideline setbacks to the southern setback. I'm only adding to the second floor. So currently, I'm just, so what I'm doing is I'm just pushing my living room three feet and change out to be flush with the first floor. Then I am building out over my little balcony that currently exists on the first. Parcel is 1,000. On the northern setback, the proposed project would square off the property, the house only moving 10 inches closer to the northern setback. The far corner of the deck is 2.1 feet closer to the setback, but it's towards the woods and at least 100 feet from my northern neighbor, who actually sits far up the hill, and he enthusiastically supports this project. I'm not adding bedrooms. I'm only expanding the size of my second floor living room. The allowable square footage for my parcel is 1,500 square feet. My project would bring the total square footage to 1,449 square feet. It's important to note that both adjacent neighbors enthusiastically approved by plans and provided letters of support. Secondly, regarding character of the neighborhood, as previously mentioned, the character of the neighborhood has long been impacted negatively by my property. Judging by the enthusiastic support of neighbors, excluding Mr. Diefenbach, it is clear that my property is updating a few of the decks when enthusiastically anticipated. The home was built in 1920, and the space, space needs have changed. People need a space for working from home and eating, but this does not mean the impact will increase. Expanding the living room and deck will draw an increased selling price and help boost the price of comparable properties in the area. Regarding the proposed deck, homes up the Aspartex have large decks up the river or finished patios. I brought some aerials for you guys to see a few of the decks that are near me that are large and close to the river. Unfortunately, you can't see them all, but properties setback from the river also have large decks overlooking the river. So viewing the river and having an elevated spot to enjoy the river is part of the character of the neighborhood and a part of nearly every house as you go up the river. I've also conducted wetlands and soil tests. Reasonable. Added to this survey, important to note that I am not in violation of the wetlands. I have also contacted the health department, performed a B-100A. I had a new septic designed for the front of the property and agreed that when my current system fails, I will commit to moving the septic and converting to city water. The health department has been to my property and conducted percolation tests, and I confirmed as recently as yesterday that there are no further steps for me to take. Considering I'm not pursuing, I'm not pushing the southern setback, unreasonable, inches towards the northern setback and 2.1 feet for the deck on the northern setback, my, what's that? I love this spot. And those setbacks, those intrusions of the setbacks on the northern side are really far from my neighbor. I'm also aligning the property with the modern requirements of space and leveraging the beauty of the parcel with a deck, which is consistent with the neighborhood. I believe a variance out of these conditions would be more than reasonable. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rocket.
One quick question. Will I have the opportunity to address Mr. Diefenbach's opposition letter?
Yes, I like to do that all at once, just in case there's someone else that opposes, and I go through the process, and I note for the record that Mr. Diefenbach or Diefenbach.
Diefenbach, thank you.
Diefenbach proposes it, and then we, he can speak.
Okay.
And then if there's someone else, then you can comment on everything. You have the burden here, so you have the last word.
Okay, got you. So just one last quick thing. This is, I did the front of the house, so you can see the difference between what the side and the rear of the house look like in their current condition. My plan would be a cedar roof. I think it's a tasteful choice, and will definitely add the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, all right. And before we get to whether there is support and opposition, first, let's find out if the board has any questions for you. Do you have any questions, Jane? Yes.
Hi. Are you also applying for a variance for lot coverage? Because I'm looking at the, your site plan, and you're permitted 10%, but you're proposing 11.52%.
I don't, I don't know anything about that.
I think that's, that seems like it should be.
And you have a question? Is there anyone else? And obviously, we have.
...of the neighborhood or significantly impact his two immediate neighbors on each side of his property. If you're familiar with the area, you're aware that these small properties of this little enclave were kind of swept up into the triple A zoning, which really is not applicable. And I think therefore, the regulations really should not be rigorous.
Okay. Okay, got it.
Well, we'll have to take that up and find out whether that is accurate. If it is, you might have to come back for additional parents on that if that's the case. We can't change it for this because we have to give notice of all variants that are being by law. That's by statute.
Okay.
We'll clear that up as part of our discussion very much. Any other questions? Is there anyone else? And obviously, we have.
...of the neighborhood or significantly impact his two immediate neighbors on each side of his property. If you're familiar with the area, you're aware that these small properties of this little enclave were kind of swept up into the triple A zoning, which really is not applicable. And I think therefore, the regulations really should not be rigorously enforced. Many of the homes.
Application, and before people jump up or jump on, let me just note what I have already for the record. Mr. Thathord of 535 Westport Turnpike supports it. Ms. Frederick of 483 Westport Turnpike supports this. Mr. Ralph Atham of 533 Westport Turnpike supports this. Is there anyone else? And obviously, we. And obviously, we have the positions at the time. Is there anyone else, uh, that wishes to speak in favor? Or if those people that wrote, you can also be heard here as well. Is there someone else? Oh, the hand raised, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, uh, my name is Christine Frederick, and I own and live in the property at four eighty-three Westport Turnpike, which is immediately adjacent to Charles's property. And a brief letter stating my support of his appeal was included as part of his packet, as you just mentioned, but I wanted to take the opportunity to simply verbalize my support of his proposed plans. I see the addition as being a de minimis expansion of only a couple of feet in order to modify the floor plan of a home that was built a hundred years ago and doesn't meet current living needs. So I don't believe the, um, expansion will change the character of the neighborhood or significantly impact his two immediate neighbors on each side of his property. If you're familiar with the area, you're aware that these small properties of this little enclave were kind of swept up into the triple A zoning, which really is not applicable, and I think therefore the regulations really should not be rigorously enforced. Many of the homes in the neighborhood have been renovated and updated, including mine. Um, I'm thrilled that Charles is looking to improve the property, bring it up to standards of the whole neighborhood. His home was neglected for many years. It is in need of attention, and I think the renovation is best for Charles and the neighborhood in terms of curb appeal and value. So I hope you do approve his request.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick. Is there anyone else in support? Any other hands to be raised remotely? All right, uh, is there anyone in opposition? And I know, uh, Mr. Deepenback is on remote, uh, but he has submitted a letter as well in opposition. Uh, is there anyone in addition to Mr. Deepenbach that wishes to speak here or remotely? All right, Mr. Deepenback, go ahead.
Yes, hi, I'm Peter Deepenback. I purchased the house at four six seven Westport Turnpike about twenty-one years ago, almost exactly twenty-one years ago. When I purchased the house, uh, my understanding was that it was in triple A zoning, and the property was grandfathered, and that my use of it would be restricted because of that. I think everybody that purchased the properties in that area knew that. Ever since then, you know, there's been construction going on all around me for the, for eighteen of the twenty-one years that I've been there, and I certainly have no problem with Charles Rocket, uh, making his house current and, and up to the standards of today, but however, to say that it doesn't impact me negatively, um, is just, just not true. Ms. Frederick, uh, is part of the property that was originally one piece of property that was split into two. So really, even though she's the adjacent property above, you know, I am actually right next to it as well, and I'm staring right at where Mr. Rocket would like to expand his house. And this includes a large deck, and he, he mentioned the river and all of our, you know, view of the river, and that would certainly be right directly in the view of the river. Now again, I have no issue with Charles, you know, improving his house, but the way it is now, I, I really do. I feel it will negatively impact the value of my house. I'll be staring right at it, and I, you know, I, I'm confused as to why Mr. Rocket didn't, um, come at me and try to work something out as far as something that was more amicable for both of us. Again, you know, Charles's house is really, really almost right in the river. I mean, his house is closer to the river than any of ours. They were all built about a hundred years ago. The six houses were built with a garage as a community, and, uh, you know, lately, obviously, it's become less so because everybody's personalized their houses, which is understandable, but, but I'm confused as to, um, Charles, uh, wanting to expand his house, other than the fact that he's had six people living in the house, and, you know, he wants to have many more people, it seems like he wants to have more people living in that house. There's been one person living in that house for about twenty-five years, and in fact, all of my neighbors, it's either one people or three people at most living in their houses. And Charles, you know, the intention of the expansion, I think, is really to provide a larger space for him to have more people in it, and also I'm confused by the three-bedroom quote. As far as I knew, that house was always a two-bedroom house and not a three-bedroom. So is it now a three-bedroom too? Um, all I know is that he has been expanding the house for the past year internally, and I haven't seen it, so I don't know what's going on, but to say that it doesn't impact me at all is just simply not true. And that's pretty much all I have to say, other than, you know, I, I love this neighborhood. I love it for its uniqueness, and, you know, the fact that the houses aren't giant. Interesting that the applicant from five thirty-five came, not the applicant, the neighbor from five thirty-five came forward, because this is a house that literally all the neighbors laughed at when it was built. It's, it's literally a tall box, because they stayed in the existing, you know, footing of the house and built a box, and it's really, it certainly does not contribute to any beauty in the neighborhood. So that's what I'm afraid of here, is that he's taking a house with character and he's boxing it off. And, um, I, I guess that's pretty much all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Deepenback.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone? Yep, you're welcome. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this? It's four ninety-seven Westport Turnpike. Okay, um, uh, Mr. Rocket, if you have the opportunity, you could address the, the comments made today, uh, as well as the, Mr. Deepenback's, uh, letter that he sent. It is also part of our record, okay?
Okay. Um, so I'm, I'm primarily addressing his letter.
Okay.
Mr. Deepenback's primary opposition in this letter is based on the protection of the Aspartak. I will remind you that I am not encroaching on the wetlands based on professional soil testing and a survey indicating wetlands markers. I'm not increasing the bedrooms or bathrooms, and I have taken necessary steps with wetlands and the health department. He claims that significant population and building density increases have damaged the water quality. If you examine the Fairfield parcel, parcel map along the Aspartak, only one home has been built in Fairfield in approximately the last seventy years north of his property. His claims are grossly exaggerated. Mr. Deepenback claims that there are strong odors of sewage after storms from the river. The heavy waters after storms are the result of road runoff from Route one thirty-six and the adjacent roads, not sewage. I know this because the town of Fairfield has an easement for a large, large water pipe that runs through my property ejecting water, uh, during storms into the Aspartak.
Yes.
Additionally worth noting, septic systems are unlikely to back up as a result of heavy rain, but if they were to, they back up into the house or the yard. To suggest large amounts of sewage are admitted into the river during storms is unfounded. Mr. Deepenback also seriously questions the adequacy of my soil tests. He does so without any knowledge of soil testing or knowledge of my soil tests or those that tested it or what they were testing for. Theirs are therefore without merit. Mr. Deepenback has dire concerns regarding the character of the neighborhood. My property has been an eyesore for decades, negatively impacting the surrounding property values. It is without question that my, that my, uh, project will improve the quality and character of the neighborhood as well as property values. Mr. Deepenback also has dire concerns regarding the viability of air and water quality. He suggests that there needs to be a moratorium in all construction to protect the river and that extensive tests must be done. There are, however, numerous tests of the Aspartak, including the Department of Environmental Protection, which tests the river every two years. The Aspartak has a double A rating, the highest rating for water quality in the state. I swim in front of my home with my daughter. The water is crystal clear. The community just north of us has a beach and docks for swimming. The water is clean and suitable, uh, for drinking. Mr. Dyson Bach also remarked that I understood the limitations of my property when I bought it. On this point, he is correct. However, I am staying within those limitations. The house is currently one thousand and thirty-three square feet, and I know the allowable square footage of my parcel is one thousand five hundred square feet. My project would bring the total square footage to one thousand four hundred and forty-nine square feet. On March twenty-ninth, Mr. Dyson Bach texted me that I should not assume he will oppose my plans and asked me to come to his home and share my plans. I shared my elevations with Mr. Dyson Bach, and among his concerns was the fact that he didn't want to look at my family or me on the deck. Nevertheless, we shook hands, and he agreed to my project. On the following Wednesday, I
Mr. Rocket, Mr. Rocket.
Yep.
I'm gonna, I, I, I'm, I'm reading ahead here, and, and, and
Okay.
The other comments are part of the record, but
All right.
Verbal record, uh, the, the back and forth, some animosity doesn't need to be
All right, I understand.
exchanged here. Okay, that's a little bit beyond what we review. We're reviewing your property, your plan, Mr. Deepenback's comments about how it's going to impact him. That's, that's what's relevant to us.
Yeah.
Not any
Okay, I'm just addressing specifically what he said in his letter.
Yes, and, and your letter, he didn't comment on that here verbally, and your, and your letter is part of the record as well.
Okay.
Okay, so you have a tit for tat in written form.
Got it.
I don't think we, I, I don't think you really want it to be here on this other public record as well.
Yeah.
Um, anything further on the other points?
No, um, I just asked this board to disregard his opposition because his arguments are invalid and his intentions are questionable. Thank you for letting me respond to his opposition.
Of course, all right, and that, uh, that, that last sum up was basically the rest of those paragraphs, so there you go.
Yeah.
All right.
Excuse me, this is, this is Patty Dyer. I am so sorry. I had sent an email. I am at work. I'm just able to log in. Is there time for me to comment?
Uh, I, oh, on, uh, are you opposed or in favor, Ms. Dyer?
I am neither. We just found out about this. I noticed that the letters in support were written at the beginning of March. However, we were only received a letter in the mail at the end of last week, so we were completely unaware of any of this information and would just request that we have some more time to figure out how this affects us.
Um, I, I, you did send an email, Ms. Dyer,
I did.
and I brought that up at the beginning, and, and it's, and your email is part of the record.
Okay.
But we, we, we post this, we've, the follow, Mr., uh, Mr. Rocket and town has followed the rules and the statutes as to what are their, our notice requirements are and what the mailings are. Everything has been followed. Uh, I propose that if he wanted to continue it, he, I would entertain the request. He wanted to move forward with his request. I can't, just because someone says they cannot, uh, be here or appear, there, we accept it in writing and comments. I can't continue the matter. Uh, you are welcome to review the, all the plans online. If you go online to the zoning board, or you can come in, and, uh, the staff here is excellent. They will show you the, any plans that you want to see as to what his proposal is. Okay?
My apologies, this is Patty Dyer. We got cut off. I'm sorry.
All right, I heard it. This is typical of Zoom. Where did I leave off?
I, if you, I work in an elementary school, so it's not conducive to these sorts of calls. My apologies. Um, you told me that my letter was part of the record. I appreciate it, and again, I'm neither opposed or in support. We were just looking for some more time to digest the information.
Yeah, I cannot continue it just because, uh, someone needs some more time, because we followed, we have, we, we have a certain schedule that we follow. We, we, we post everything pursuant to statute, and it's been noticed. Um, they have their right to go forward. Uh, I can't prevent that. I do entertain requests for continuance from the applicant, because they're the ones that have to prove to us, uh, that the applicant is, uh, is worthy. Uh, but you can contact, you can look online to see exactly what their plans are, and you can also, uh, stop by the town hall, uh, and go to the, the second floor, the back building, and, uh, look at the plans.
Yes, I did do that, however, w- last night is when we were able to take care of that stuff, because we just found out about this. So I completely understand, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Patty. All right, so, uh,
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, in regard to, uh, these, um, uh, requesting a variance for lot coverage, uh, the surveyor got his numbers, um, backwards. The eight percent is under the FAR, the total, that should be under the lot coverage, and eleven percent on the lot coverage should be on the FAR.
All right.
Okay, good.
Thank you for clearing that up. Now that's officially closed the hearing on four ninety-seven Westport Turnpike. Thank you. Uh, number five, uh, eight fifty-five Bronson Road, map two two eight parcel nineteen A, petition of Adley Munson, Brianna Solomon for a variance of zoning regulations section five point two point four to reduce the street line setback from fifty feet, currently twenty-nine point seven feet, proposing thirty-one point three feet to the house and twenty-six point three feet to the porch and section five point two point five to increase a lot coverage from ten percent, currently ten point five six percent, proposing eleven point three three percent. Permission to construct a second floor addition and new open front porch, premises double A zone. Mr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, my name is John Roundtree. I'm the architect for, uh, Munson and Miss Solomon. Uh, so I'm here just to present the, uh, project. It's a, uh, modest addition. We're asking for variances for, uh, for setbacks and coverage to allow us to build a, a second floor master bedroom, approximately five hundred square feet, and a front porch of approximately a hundred and sixty square feet. Um, the house is a pre-existing, a non-conforming lot and a double A zone. Uh, we're asking for, um, uh, upset back from existing of twenty-nine point seven to twenty-six point three, and, uh, lot coverage, uh, existing is ten point five six, and we're asking for, uh, lot coverage of eleven point three three. Uh, our FAR is below the, uh, twenty percent allowable at sixteen point seven percent. Uh, so we're, we're, it's a, it's a fairly modest, uh, addition. I, I did bring a, a rendering of the front elevation. You can see, uh, this is the existing house. This is the proposed, uh, second floor addition and the porch in the front. So basically, we're keeping it on a fairly low scale, uh, adding dormers to keep it in scale with the neighborhood. Uh, it's, um, let's see here. Floor plan, you can see, floor plan is the, uh, front porch, which is five feet by thirty-two feet, and then the second floor, second floor is basically building over an existing one, one-story, uh, portion of the house for a master bedroom and a master bathroom. And, uh, uh, the, uh, owners have spoken to all their neighbors. They, I think, believe submitted letters in, uh, support of the, uh, application, and, uh, we feel that it's a modest, uh, uh, ask for a variance. Um, and that's all I have. Got any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Does the board have any questions, Mr. Roundtree? All right, hearing no questions. Is there anyone, uh, that wishes to speak in support of this application? I will note for the record, we did re, re, receive a support from, uh, Melanie, um, Melanie Marks at, uh, one, at eight fifty-seven, uh, Bronson. Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this? Eight fifty-five Bronson Road? Okay. Don't hear anyone? I'm going to close the hearing on eight fifty-five Bronson Road. Thank you, Mr. Roundtree.
Thank you.
Our next item is number six, and that's seventy-five Adley Road, map four seven parcel three two four, petition of Ian and Katie Marucci for variance of the zoning regulations section five point two point four to reduce the street line setback from forty feet, currently thirty-one point nine feet, proposing thirty-one point nine feet in section five point two point four point three, to reduce the side setback for an accessory structure from ten feet, currently one point eight feet, proposing one point eight feet. Uh, permission to construct a second floor addition to primary dwelling and to raise the roof of, uh, to the accessory building premises R three zone. And this, uh, Ms. Marucci?
Yes, hi. Ian Marucci, seventy-five Adley Road. Um, yeah, we're, uh, the house, uh, we live in is from nineteen fifty, uh, so it's not conforming. Um, we have two shed dormers in the front, um, or two dormers in the front. We're not, uh, proposing to go past that with the, the new, so we're basically connecting the two dormers and raising the roof for additional storage. It's a slab on grade home, um, and that's the purpose of the garage raising, just additional storage. Um, and that's really it.
Okay, all right. Mr. Marucci, does, uh, board have any questions for Mr. Marucci? Jane?
Did we get letters from your neighbors?
Um, I have the signed copies. There's just one neighbor that, um, rents the house across the street. We've tried to track him down. he lives in North Carolina, and so the letter, well, your packets or our packets have been sent to that address, hopefully it hasn't made it to this, but I haven't been able to track them down.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone in opposition? Seventy-five Adley Road. Okay, I'm going to close the hearing on seventy-five Adley Road, thank you, Mr. Marucci. Our next item that we have is eight ninety-one Fairfield Beach Road, map one-eight-four parcel three-one, petition of Mary S. and Robert M. Dunn for a variance of zoning regulations, section eleven point twelve, to reduce the setback from Long Island Sound from one hundred and eighty-eight feet, currently one hundred and ninety-eight feet to house and one hundred and eighty-nine feet to open porch, proposing one hundred and ninety-eight feet to house and one hundred and eighty-nine feet to second floor, open porch and roof. Permission to construct a second floor open porch with roof, premises BD zone, Attorney Leclair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Brian, looking here, and I represent Mary and Robert Dunn, Mr. Dunn is here, of eight ninety-one Fairfield Beach Road. This is not to request any increase in any non-conformity, and you may be wondering why we have this application, and it is after discussing this matter with staff that this is how they felt best we proceed. This is a simple request to construct a second floor open porch with a roof directly over a first floor open porch. If you look at the zoning block on the drawings, you'll see that none of the setbacks change. They're currently one hundred and ninety-eight feet, and we're talking about the setback from the sound, it's currently one hundred and ninety-eight feet for the house and one hundred and eighty-nine feet for the deck porch below. We're proposing the same, one hundred and ninety-eight feet for the house and the same one eighty-nine for that lower deck. The footprint remains the same of the house, nothing is extending to any size, nothing is extending taller, nothing is extending further to the water. Basically, this house already is further from the sound than its neighbors directly to the east, it sits further back away from the water. This is not going to put it any closer to the water at all. It would be appropriate, I would argue, under Connecticut law, it's consistent with the area, it's consistent with what changes have occurred in the zone. The use is not going to change, the square footage inside is not changing, it's simply putting a second floor porch above the first floor porch to harmonize with the neighborhood and to look similar to many of the other buildings in the area. It's a narrow lot going to the sound already, as you can see, and this is just a modest architectural improvement that Duns are looking for, and we ask that you grant this request, please.
Thank you, Attorney Leclair, does the board have any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Can you just say what the hardship is?
Yeah, the hardship is a combination, this is a very, first, it's in conformity with the neighborhood, the hardship, I would argue, is that this is a narrow lot on the sound with a very large setback coming back from the sound, it's a very narrow lot. And in fact, we are going on top of what is already there, there's already a first floor deck, this is just taking the roof of the deck and making it a floor for the second floor open porch. It's not really actually going to vary anything other than the permission to make the second floor, we're not expanding into any area. The question is, do we really need a variance, that's something we've wrestled with to begin with on this.
You're saying the hardship is because of the.
The nature of the lot, the nature of the lot, yes, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, Attorney Leclair? Alright.
Nothing, thank you.
Hearing no other questions, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application, eight ninety-one Fairfield Beach Road? Alright, hearing none, I'm going to close the hearing on eight ninety-one Fairfield Beach Road, thank you, Attorney Leclair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Our next item that we have is number eight, and that is two-seven-one-three Redding Road, map two-eight parcel two-one, petition of Dylan and Nicole Atia for a variance of the zoning regulations, section five point two point four point three, reduces street line setback and rear line setbacks for accessory structure from sixty feet and fifty feet, proposing twenty feet and twenty feet, permission to construct a one-story shed, premises triple A zone. And are we coming from remote?
We're in the middle.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
We are remote, hi everyone, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to do this virtually, sorry we couldn't be there in person, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my wife Nicole is on the line too, hi Nicole. So we, we live at twenty-seven thirteen Redding Road with our three kids, we are looking to put up a storage shed, twenty by twenty structure in the back corner of our lot. As the proposal says, we're seeking a variance to reduce the setback from the street line and rear line setbacks, and really that's for two reasons, the first reason is we're unfortunately subject to a street line variance on an unimproved section of Brett Road, which actually hasn't been an active roadway in several decades, I'm told. So from the parcel plan, you'll see the lower part of our, of the sheet there, Brett Road Unimproved is actually a heavily vegetated and area with tall trees and a lot of brush that kind of obstructs the view from neighboring properties on the other side of that unimproved section of Brett Road. The other reason we're looking for the setback is that were we to try to comply with the current setback, the only area we would be able to put any structure would be on a heavily sloped section of our lot, so if you can see the section that conforms with the current setbacks is so sloped that we wouldn't be able to put a structure there, if we would, it would be very complicated, and so for that reason, we're requesting the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Atia, does the board have any questions? Go ahead, Jane.
So, when I look at the drawings, it's a garage, basically, it has two garage doors, yeah?
Yes, that's right.
Which direction are those garage doors going to face, towards Brett Road or towards the house?
They are facing Redding Road, so they're facing towards the front of the property, or the Redding Road side of the property.
But will you put a driveway in?
No, no, so we're, this is just for like lawn equipment, storage and like a small workshop, so we purchased a prefab structure that has two car, like two car garage doors because we had a good discount on it. But the structure will be on a gravel pad and on a, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? Like wood floor, so it's not, it's not meant to support vehicles and we're not intending on really driving down there. We're going to ride on lawnmower.
Okay, thanks, that's it.
Any other questions for the Atias? Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application?
I just, I have a quick, I don't know if I'll be able to do this virtually, but I have some photos of the slope in the yard that, you know, make a little more sense than, than just looking at the site plan. So if I, if I can, I'm going to try to share my screen and show you those pictures. And we'll, we'll see if that actually works. Can, can you see a photo?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so this is taken from Redding Road, looking towards the back of the property. So where my cursor is here is the unimproved Brett Road. This is the top of the hill, and the back property line is, is down there, so it's very unlikely that you would even see the structure from Redding Road. And then this was taken from the top of the hill, again, this, this right here is the unimproved section of Brett Road. This is not to scale, but is the area where the shed will be going, and this is the back property line. So if we were to put the shed in conformance with the variance, it would be somewhere in this area which would make it inaccessible from the hill and sort of, you know, not, not usable as a storage shed. And this last photo was taken from the Brett Road side, just so you can see the angle, this is, this is a very steep hill. You can see one of our kids left their sled there from the one time it snowed, it's a great sledding hill, but it is pretty steep, so I think that just gives you a better sense of the property and why we do really need to try to get it as, as back as, into that corner as we can. And we think that the twenty feet variance is a reasonable request, and we ask that it be approved.
Thank you, do you have a question on that, Jane?
Yes, what was it? So Brett Road, right now you can drive down Brett Road extension even though it's not improved?
No, you cannot, no.
No, when you, when you come down Brett Road, when you, when you come down Brett Road and you hit Redding Road, that's essentially as far as you can go, so you'd have to turn right or left, and there's just like tall trees blocking what used to be your road.
And there, there is a stone wall blocking off, you know, that extends, so you couldn't, you couldn't drive a car down there even if you tried without breaking through the stone wall.
This is my question, is how are you going to get construction crews to deliver this back there if you can't get there by vehicle?
So there isn't, sorry.
They deliver, they deliver the shed in like three or four different part, like pre-built partitions, like the walls are pre-built, and then they bring them down there and with what's called a mule, it's like a little, kind of like a little ATV that like drags it down there, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but.
I just, they're going to come down the hill and out the back.
What's that?
They're going to come through your property and down your backyard hill.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, is there anyone that speaks in favor of the application? Is there anyone that opposes the application? Anyone remotely? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing on two-seven-one-three Redding Road, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Atia.
Thank you.
Alright, number nine, one thousand one South Pine Creek Road was continued, number ten, one thousand three South Pine Creek Road was continued. Our last item on the agenda is number eleven, that's twenty-one thirty-one Black Rock Turnpike, map seven-six, parcel three-four-seven, petition of Dolan Properties LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, section twenty-eight point six point twelve, to reduce the required parking for outdoor dining by nineteen spaces, permission to allow the existing outdoor dining area to remain, premises D C D zone, go ahead, sir.
My name is Jeremiah Klein, I'm representing Little Pub and Billwin Properties as well. My address is one oh two Gregory Boulevard, Norah, Connecticut. So basically, during COVID, they allowed us to have outdoor dining, we followed all those, we complied with everything, followed all the restrictions, and we built an outdoor patio. Patio that we built was fourteen hundred square feet. The governor's orders end, the end of this month, when they end, they only allow for four hundred square feet, so we need another thousand square feet is what we're looking for, for this variance to happen. What happens is, you guys are asking us for twenty-seven parking spaces, there's only nineteen parking spaces in order to make that happen. We've had absolutely no complaints or problems with neighboring businesses, the police department or the fire department, we got signatures from all the businesses, they're in the application that we submitted. We also would be doing some improvements to the area. On Black Rock Turnpike and Stilson, that corner, people use the front park, the front parking area as a cut-through, that's where the patio is existing currently. We would be closing that off, we'd be pulling the DOT permit in order to put a new curb out, and it would completely shut that off, so they wouldn't be speeding through that area using it as a cut-through. I don't really have anything else.
Alright, does the board have any questions for Mr. Klein? Yes, Jane?
Hi, so can you just state what the hardship is?
Yeah, so the hardship, so outdoor dining is a large part of what we would be able to do, especially in the summertime, in the summer months, our business drastically drops. With having this, it's actually allowed us to keep a lot of clientele, it's allowed us to be profitable, that's what we're in business for. And I don't know that we can sustain it without that outside dining. You have all the businesses along Route One that have outdoor dining, they have the access to it, they have the ability to do it, we just don't have that. If we don't get this, we don't have another space that we can even put the four hundred square feet that you're allowing us to have as an outdoor space.
I don't understand why you can't do four hundred.
We don't have any, well, because we would still have to close that side off, am I correct? On, coming on Stilson, we would still have to get approval to be able to close that off, to get that four hundred square feet, because it's still in the parking lot.
Right, but that's not part of your variance application, right? And you could close that off, work directly with DOT and close it off at any time, right? It's not really part of the dining, part of the application.
I guess not.
And there, can you, is there, if I'm correct, there's no public parking along Black Rock Turnpike? Or an option on that corner?
There's public parking in the lot, we would be taking a couple of the spaces to keep the existing.
Public, like.
No, there's no, there's no street parking on Stilson. No, 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 there's not, there's.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Klein, do you know if some of the patrons have parked over towards the, the large parking, on the other side of Starbucks? Do they park there and do they walk up those stairs, do you know if your customers have.
Not that I know of, I know that we park back behind, there's the medical building back behind, and then back behind that, there is more parking for that lot, which is owned by Dolan Properties.
Might be a good idea to suggest that there's another parking, there's this actual staircase, instead of having to walk across Stilson, maybe suggest to customers that there's lots of parking over near Starbucks, it's a huge lot.
I, I don't know, I don't know whether or not they do, I, I, I don't have the answer for it.
No, no, it's okay, alright, any other questions? Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition? Twenty-one thirty-one Black Rock Turnpike, Little Pub. Alright, I'm going to close the hearing on twenty-one thirty-one Black Rock Turnpike, thank you, Mr. Klein. Closing our public hearing as well, we're going to take. It was closed, she did an excellent job.
Excellent, terrible job. After seeing everyone else, I thought, oh, again.
She did a, she did a good, good job, if you want to supplement with the petitions, because you had those in your possession, I know you're running late, allow those to be supplemented to the record for the petition, so that's part of the full record, so, yeah, you give it, give it to Matt, yeah. Alright, we're going to take a five-minute break, if that's okay with everyone, we'll be back here at four sixteen. Call back to order, Town of Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, we're reconvening our working session, several matters to go through today, and first on our agenda is on our continued docket, twenty-two sixty-eight Fairfield Beach Road, that was continued to May, general docket number one, one five six five Post Road, Mr. Krolak presented this for United Fairfield Realty, it's to establish a restaurant, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jerry, alright, discussion?
I had a question to see whether this requires a change of use because it's going from retail to restaurant?
It does, and it's on their docket.
So, but this can happen before that?
Yeah.
It has to.
Okay.
Yeah, no sense even going to them to change their use if you can't have the parking. Alright, any other discussion about?
I think based on the, based on the description and the intended use with the plan for more foot traffic, it's a logical request.
All that downtown, all the parking on the turnpike.
Alright, bringing the vote, Kate?
Yes.
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 Yes, granted, number two, six sixty-eight Bronson Road, Mr. McKeon presented this for Ready-to-Go Enterprise, and it's to construct one-story and second floor addition, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, sir, a second?
Jane, say it.
Thank you, Jane, alright, discussion?
I get to, I get this once a hearing, it's a very reasonable request.
You've got to make sure you save it for the right one.
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Because there's, there's a bunch of people after that are looking for that comment now.
They are, but we, I got the thesaurus, so we can.
We'll find something.
More stuff for reasonable.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? All right, bring it to a vote, Katie.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, number three, two zero eight Shore Village Drive, Ms. Shea presented the application, and, and this is to construct addition and attach the detached garage, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. All right, discussion?
Very well.
After I saw all eleven, I thought, oh, I'm thinking up there again, I better get out of here.
No disrespect to the design professional that sits on our board, but sometimes they can screw it up, all right? All right.
Saved by your point.
Let's bring it to a vote. Katie?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Four ninety-seven Westport Turnpike, Mr. Rocket presented the application for himself and his wife, and this is to construct an addition and deck to the property, and remember, we had some comments back and forth, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brian, sir, a second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane. All right, discussion? All right, so we had several neighbors that were in support, both, both-side neighbor, Mr. Deefenbach, who is two doors down on the south, he presented something in writing and also spoke, and Mr. Rocket responded to that. So, discussion?
I think Mr. Deefenbach's comments were not zoning-related, they had to do with environmental factors and things that have nothing to do with our zoning board, you know, things that we have to decide on.
Yeah, and, you know, looking at, at these particular lots, and, and they're all in the same boat there, but they're all unique in some fashion, because we don't, just because someone else got a approval two or three doors down, doesn't mean, but this lot, it's two acres, they slope down, and it's, it needs two acres, and they have, you know, way, way less.
Way less.
Less than half an acre.
So, you know, that makes it, you know, you have topographic and the size that makes it classified for a hardship for that particular piece of property that makes the enforcement of the, these zoning regs, which are setbacks, with, you know, so when you don't have what you're supposed to have and you want to do a modest addition, you know, enforcing those setbacks on this, you know, small, undersized lot is, is a classic hardship, so.
And I think it is going to be significant to the existing conditions of the neighborhood and the structures.
Yeah, I agree. Bring it to a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Number five, eight fifty-five Bronson Road, petition of Munson Solomon, Mr. Roundtree presented the application, and this is to construct a second-floor addition and new open-front porch, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. And discussion?
A modest allocation, the minimum.
I was saving that for the next one.
Yeah, and also on this one, you have a, you're supposed to have one acre and they have point four two.
Yeah, they have point four two.
And they're still coming in pretty close for quite a small addition.
One by three percent coverage.
All right, bring a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Number six, seventy-five Adley Road, Mr. Marucci presented the application for himself and his wife, and they want to second-floor addition to the dwelling and raise the roof to an accessory structure, entertain a motion to approve?
Brian, moves.
Brian, sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Discussion?
And it's simple and clean and keeps with the neighborhood.
Yeah, the, the small capes on there, on slabs on grade, they need, they need a little extra leniency, especially when you're supposed to have twenty thousand square feet as a minimum, you have thirteen thousand.
Yes.
All right, oh?
Yes.
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 Yes. Number seven, eight ninety-one, it, you don't have to worry, you can get up, it's not interrupting. Eight ninety-one Fairfield Beach Road, petition of the Duns, Attorney Leclerc presented the application, it's to construct a second-floor open porch, new roof, down on, on the beach, entertain a motion to approve?
Brian, moves.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second? Thank you, and discussion?
It's not changing anything. I barely understood the need for the variance, but since they need one.
Oh, I think it's a.
All about the view.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea to, uh, those spenders have the variance on hand in, in a, in a neighborhood that is tight with narrow lots that create hardships for a lot of the people down there, so.
And given the position of it being behind, it's nearest neighbor, and it's not going to create an obstruction, so.
All right, Kate?
Yes.
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 Yes. Number eight, twenty-seven thirteen Redding Road, the Atia presented their application, they both joined in, tag team on that, and they want to construct the shed down in the lower corner of their lot, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian, sir, a second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane. Too slow, Terry. Discussion?
Good luck to them. I know it's Russian.
It's a garage. Yeah, that back there is our road that isn't even there.
Right, yeah, it's a non-existent road, it's never been a road.
Yeah, how lame.
Right, way back.
The setback from the road does create is, that aspect of that, that side is a hardship, that's really not a road, it shouldn't have to be.
No.
And topography, you either put it in the middle of your backyard, or you put it into the back corner, which most people do for a shed, and they can't put it on a slope.
Bringing twenty thousand tons of fill-in, they can, they can have a flat, but it's not necessary.
All right, bring to a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. And number nine, one thousand one South Pine Creek was continued, number ten, one thousand three South Pine Creek Road was continued, number eleven, twenty-one thirty-one Black Rock Turnpike, petition of Dolan Properties, Mr. Klein presented the application, entertain a motion to approve, it's for allowing that existing outdoor dining to remain, and it needs a parking space variance, entertain a motion? Thanks, Brian. Second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
I can't see what the hardship is, and I'm going to add specifically, it's kind of like it was an economic decision rather than anything attached to this property.
Well, the hardship, as I understand, is the removal of parking spaces that are required, reducing the number of parking spaces required that's available.
Well, the hardship, I'd be tempted to ask the property, because they couldn't get a property that has a bit of an answer to that.
I know, I know we're not allowed to talk about precedent, but we talk about shared parking all the time, and reducing number of parking spaces for a business based on shared parking.
Isn't that a hardship?
The neighbors' support is important, especially on this side, since we don't have the, the street parking that we have downtown.
Right, that's the big difference.
You know, so the location here, without having all the available extra parking, you know, does create a problem for them.
Right.
Does create a hardship, they don't have that on their site, they don't get to enjoy the benefits of other restaurants that have that.
No, they still can have outdoor seating, they're just limited to four hundred square feet instead of fourteen hundred square feet, which, you know, you get more revenue with fourteen hundred, but they're not prevented from having outdoor.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that.
Yeah, so, I mean, they just can't as much as they want, so.
All right, bring it to a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. That passes, granted. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, see you next month.